Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening for our regular board meeting. And we're gonna go ahead and bring this meeting, call this meeting to order. Would you please take role?
Ms. Atkins.
Sure.
Mrs. McDaniel.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mrs. Shuffle.
Here.
Mr. Sorenson.
Here.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Okay, I'd like to, next item on our agenda, approval of the November 3rd, 2025 agenda.
Motion to approve. Second?
Is there any discussion? Oh, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffle?
Yes.
Mr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Okay, now, I would like to open the public hearing for first, the high school mechanical replacement.
So I do have, Mr. Wallace is here to talk briefly about that. So if you want to step up to the mic up there, just make sure it's on. Dr. Hartman, I sent you an email, just the body of the email is what we need to see. Let's scroll down, maybe there's a, there is the document, that's right.
That's the Titan Hill breakout. There's no breakout for the high school.
Oh, there's not, okay. So the first, the first one, we have two hearings tonight, and basically, we're just giving the public an opportunity to respond. We do have two projects that we're gonna be working on in the summer of 2026, that have been on the docket since the very beginning, one of which is the Titan Hill envelope, which will be doors, just basically exterior work. And then the other portion of it is the second half of the high school mechanical. So the first, high school mechanical is first up there, so I'll let Brett talk about the first portion of it.
High school mechanical project for summer of 26 consists of replacing five more rooftop units. Four of them will come off of the chiller, similar to what we did this last year. One will remain on the chiller. The units that will be replaced are the rooftop unit number one, which is the main one in the commons area. It feeds the entire cafeteria, the band wing, the hallway, everything down there. And then the other four that will be replaced here are the small gym, the wrestling room, and the two locker rooms. Those will be the ones coming off the chiller. Also, in part of that project, there will be a fair amount of mechanical control work done. There's approximately 25 air terminal units that run off of air handler number one that the controllers on them are obsolete, they don't work anymore. Can't get parts for them, and you essentially have zero control of those rooms that those units feed. So we'll be replacing about 25 units. Also expanding the, the building control system in itself, there's, they call it a Jace, it's, I think I like the main server router of a system. There's only one for the entire high school. It's old, out of date, and overloaded with data coming in. So we're gonna add a second one that will more or less control the entire east wing of the school and take the load off the older one. Most schools nowadays run with like three units, so. And then, the final part of that project, and it kinda goes in hand with some of the demo work we'll be doing with the mechanical system. We have to do a lot of above ceiling work anyway, and I know the school's been wanting to remove and replace a lot of the acoustical ceiling and the lobby and the hallways of the school, just, they're pretty worn out, they're sagging, they're kinda stained up. So we're gonna be removing and replacing all of the acoustical ceiling grid and the tiles everywhere from the, call it the lobby area in front of the office, working through the cafeteria, the lobby in front of the gyms, and then all the way down the gym hallway. So that's all part of that project. The engineer's estimate for this work is a million dollars, and we had budgeted a million dollars. So this project is actually posted for bid right now, and the bid date is set to be November 20th.
It's also, we're also redoing the, we're doing the, just like we did the LED lights at Craft and Titan Hill. We're doing LED lights at the high school and middle school next year, so just as good time if we're gonna replace that portion of that ceiling that everybody sees that, that's the portion.
That's not part of this project, but it'll also get entered in the summer. Any questions on that?
The estimated price is actually 1,050,000, so the budget is 1 million, so, so it's right, I mean, right in line. Who knows how the bids are gonna come in.
So we have to replace the ceiling tiles? I mean, it seems to be like nowadays, like you go, I mean, I'm gonna use some of the restaurants, they don't have, they don't have anything up there.
I would, I would, I would argue against that because those buildings are from the get-go design that way. So their mechanical systems are routed nicely, cleaner, painted. You've got 20 years of who knows what up above there, and you don't wanna expose that. Plus, you'll change your acoustics and...
The other thing, I bet it gets really loud in the, it gets really loud in the commons with lunch and, you know, 500 kids in there, so.
Yep.
The kids over there. Is it loud enough as it is? They should lower that ceiling, so.
Any questions? Okay, and now the Titan Hill exterior envelope?
Titan Hill has a project that is nearing completion and the design and bid document work. It consists of, at Titan Hill, mainly an exterior shell renovation rejuvenation project. So we're gonna be replacing any and all windows and door frames and doors that need to be replaced. There's some newer aluminum doors on the most recent additions up there that will remain, but all the old original stuff, anything that's hollow metal will get replaced and put back with aluminum, better thermal performance, less likely to corrode like you've seen up there. So we'll be replacing all the, all the doors, windows, and frames around the entire building. Going through repairing a bunch of brick, tuck pointing work, also recaucking the entire exterior of the building, which would include like brick control joints, window caulking, there's all sorts of dried out trunk and stuff in there that lets a lot of air in, moisture in, just bad building performance. Gonna be adding a sidewalk out of the west pool exit door. There's a door there that's been there for years, and there's no concrete outside of it, and it's actually a fire exit, so you need to have safety dress to get out to the parking lot out of that door. So that's the main gist of the project, is those four items. Those came in with the architect's estimate of 462,949 dollars. We're budgeted at 550,000 for that project. Now, one other item within this project that we're still kinda discussing and going through some options is the school would like to add a canopy over the, call it the northwest entrance into the building. Entrance, they use it more as an exit when kids depart, to allow a gathering spot in the amount of rain or bad weather for the kids to kinda sit outside waiting for the cars to come up, and they don't have to run out the door then. We're going through a couple different design options on that, and the cost of them before we make that decision, so. But we have about $90,000 left under our budget to try to figure out how to perform this work.
You're talking about where they load up for the buses?
Yeah, so you have the main entrance, and then facing the building, there's one to the left, that's where all the kids come out of. And so, what we do, if it's nice, which is most of the time, they come out and sit along the, sit along the curb, and they can just sit there and wait. If it's not nice out, then they all have to wait inside, and they wait inside, and then we try to radio, and it's just kind of a hectic who can come. And so at this point, it'd be nice if we could radio, have them come out in a covered canopy, so at least they're standing there. So when their cars come up, then they're not deciding to pick up their bag and exit the door, and just try to keep that traffic moving, so.
So would it be where they're sitting, or where the doors are?
No, it's, there's that long walkway.
Okay.
It would kinda come out, you know, halfway to three quarters of the way. I know that we originally, the first go at it was try to make it match up with the, with the entrance, which only has a, what would you say, that's maybe a 10-foot canopy? And that's, that wouldn't really do anything for us, but we do know that architecturally, that would look like it matches. I don't know that we're gonna get away with doing that because it's gonna be a significant cost difference versus getting almost like a freestanding metal canopy that looks nice. I mean, you try to get it to look nice, but that can come.
Kinda like an awning.
Kinda like an awning type of deal, yeah. That would come out, and at least then, we can stage kids out, you know, in that area, so.
And we, we haven't decided yet, we've gotta go through a couple more go-arounds, but if we go with like the standalone awning type system, we'll likely run that as a separate project outside of the one I just described. It'll get that one out for bid sooner while we figure that out, plus, we could just find a local company that does those and have them come install it. So probably save us some money not having it rolled into a general contractor's package.
Would the budget still be 90,000 roughly, the target for?
For 90, we could get, easily get the pre-manufactured style one. You go one that's built into the building and matches the building. We're not gonna, we're not gonna hit those numbers, so.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna question the amount of 90.
It's a ballpark, bubba, because we don't know what we're doing yet.
Well, I, but I don't want to see a carport out in front of our school.
The, the few examples they shared, because nothing'll get, nothing'll go until you guys see designs and approve something. But the few examples they showed were classy, like they looked nice. It wasn't like a carport that goes there. It's, and the, and the prices that they were looking at was, it was a much shorter one. It was kinda matching the same, it was only a 10-footer, but it was $25,000 for like a 10-footer versus, I think it needs to be more like 50 feet, so obviously, you know.
Well, and I'm going off of the cost of some of the construction that we did at the high school. It was $80,000, and so I, I don't know that 90 is enough for to, I mean, that would be one of my concerns.
Right, and in the overall budget, I mean, obviously, we have wiggle room, we've been under, you know, throughout. It's just one of those things that's, it's a, it's a request that comes up every year, not even from the administrations, from the staff members who have to, who have to do the pick-up and drop-off every day. They're begging for some kinda coverage out there, because not only that, they have to sit out there in the rain in their coats. It'd be nice if they could kinda tuck in and then come back out, but right now, in order, the only place to do that is go clear back in the building. And so, it's more of a request from the staff as far as how can we do this? My, my portion of it is like, how can we do it and make it look like it's purposeful, and not just, not just pitch a tent up there? Like, so, it's just, we just came up with this when we saw we were a little bit short on the, you know, as far as our budget goes. The other question becomes is how much further do you wanna go? Do you wanna add, you know, additional, you know, windows, do you wanna add additional? And I said, really, if we could make, so I asked, of course, I asked the staff, because that's what we do, is we say, you know, what do you guys want? It's your building. And this was the number one thing that came back, like, what can we, if there's room for this, can we make it happen? So they've only had about a week and a half to chew on it, so that's why we kinda talked about making it almost like a separate project. So he's just mentioning right now that like, because there's, rather than try to fill up that whole budget point, we've got what we needed, what we need to do with the building right now at 400 and, I can't see it up there.
462.
462. Let's go ahead and just save the other and explore this avenue of putting an awning on. So, my goal is that, I mean, I just sent back a response today, my goal is that within a week or two, we could have a more conclusive idea, and then we can share it at that time, so.
It may be a good idea to run it as a separate project, because without that, the documents are essentially complete and ready to go out to bid, so.
And I think we'd just run it as a separate project then, all together, so.
Okay.
It would be nice though, because I experienced the Titan Hill situation. It's not bad, but it would be nice to have them outside and not burning in the sun, because they, my kids would get my car sweaty, so, you know, just, it would be nice to have that.
For the staff and the students, it would be really nice to, to be able to have, so.
Any other questions on that one?
Do we have any questions from anyone, since this is a public hearing? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, and we will go ahead and close the public hearing for the high school mechanical replacement and Titan Hill exterior envelope. With that, we have commendations and good news.
So we actually have, for your enjoyment, we try to bring in, about every season, we bring in a group of students who have excelled that particular season. You know, if you qualified for state, or you did, did an excellent performance, these guys have done everything above and beyond. And I know Mr. Tucker at first, it's hard to get him to come up and be boastful, so I had a, Mrs. Schwaller make a video so we could be both boastful for him of, all in all, this was an incredibly successful marching band year. They just, they killed it everywhere they went, and so I just wanted to show them off a little bit, so, so if we could play that video first. So, first of all, oh, here we go, we're not done yet, I guess, here we go.
That was the cutest. I love the snowman.
I just kinda thinking as I'm watching that, we're gonna have to start sending like another vehicle to carry home your awards, which is called the award video. Because they're standing there holding all those trophies, like.
You can see the trophy case.
Oh, we're gonna get a, we can, maybe we can revert the, the small gym into the trophy, band trophy room, so. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite you guys to just come up and just kinda stand kinda close to the mic and just introduce yourselves. And what, what, because even though I know marching band's done, I know that, you know, a, a band kid's life is like never not in band. And so, maybe talk about, besides marching band, like, what else are you in? So like, if I was up there, I'd be like, Brent Hazing, trumpet, I do marching band, like those types of things.
Okay, I'm Amelia Guo. I was the drum major last year, so I conducted the band, but I'm also in our jazz band. I participate in the musical bands, and then I'm also in NHS, five-star student council, FCA, oh, choir and show choir, I think.
Can't forget those. Mr. Plu would be.
Hello, my name's, do I have to, okay. My name's Mila. I play saxophone, and I play in marching band, in jazz band, honor band, symphonic band, and show band, which I really like show band. And I'm also involved in student council and NHS, yeah.
My name's Preston. I also play saxophone. I play like pretty much every band possible, symphonic band, jazz band, marching band, honor band, show band, all-state, all those things. Outside of band, I'm a part of Skills USA, and I think that's about it.
Awesome.
I'm Bella, and I play saxophone. I play in jazz band, marching band, gonna play in symphonic band, and I'm choir and wrestling.
Very good. And we have Mr. Tucker here as well.
Yeah. I wanted to say thank you all for inviting us. I got a special invitation from Dr. Hazing, and I know we got to see some of you last year, and it's always great to come up to a board meeting and see the people who make the stuff work back behind the scenes. So I just wanna thank you all for having us here. Talking about music's great and, and all that, but I was kinda hoping maybe we could perform just like 30 seconds for you. Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
So, so this is, the reason they're all the saxophones is, one small part of our show was a saxophone quartet. And so we thought, if we're only bringing a few people, that's the perfect thing to bring, to feature them. Amelia will help conduct, as that was her main job. Worth mentioning, we're also missing Brian, who, Brian Sell, who would play the very sax for this. He's at wrestling tonight, and so he couldn't make it quite here for this, so. All right, without further ado, let's go.
Do you wanna kinda center around the podium, that way the camera meets you? Where's the camera? Yeah, you guys are great there.
If you stand on this side, then the camera, there we go. There, that's, I'll help you out. There you go, ready? Here we go. Wow.
Wow.
Good stuff, good stuff. Good job.
That was amazing.
Amazing.
Too bad they can't just play in the background. Make our meetings so great.
Are you guys open for like weddings and parties? We just have you like in the background, just, that's perfect. No, that's just amazing. So tell us, you guys are all, what grade?
Senior.
I'm a senior.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a senior.
Okay, so seniors, not, not to dismiss the sophomore, you guys have done this for now for four years. How does this show the, for your marching band, has it rank up with your other years that you guys have done?
I'm always surprised by what Tucker picks. Last year was waterfalls, I'm like, how are we gonna put waterfall in the show? But we did it. I don't know, I think you have a lot of like diverse shows, like we go to competitions, we get to watch other people. We see what they put on, and, you know, sometimes it's kinda like the same old thing, like you see a lot of like recurring things. My winter is like a pretty like recurring thing, like, if there was even like one competition, like the show that hung before us was like a fire and ice one or something.
There's a cold play one.
Yeah.
At my west.
So, but Tucker always does it in a different way, and I think that's what really makes us stand out. We just get to, we just do it differently, and I think that's really fun.
That's awesome.
So, when you guys are marching in, in July and August, and it's 110 degrees, and you're playing Winter Wonderland songs, does that make you feel cooler?
Yeah. One of the, one of the staff members we bring in every year is Luke. He also does marching basics. He's like a big contribution to our band. But he told us over and over this season, he was like, just remember when it gets really cool, you got to compete in the cold, just remember how nice that this heat was. Because this year wasn't, we didn't hit any heat, like at least crazy heat that we have in the past. Like last year, we were out and it was really, really hot. This year wasn't necessarily as bad. The highest we were out was probably like 95 maybe, 90? So it wasn't that bad in comparison to previous years, but, I mean, it's still not great, but.
Especially on turf.
So what was the highlight of the season? What are you guys gonna take away from it?
For me personally, I got the Solist Award at one of our competitions, so I thought that was very nice.
I would've given it to you too, that was fantastic.
It was amazing.
I mean, I really liked the one where we went to, was our last one, in stadium?
Yes.
We were in like a big indoor stadium, and it was our last competition, and like you could hear our sound echoing on all the walls, and it sounded really cool and very influential and memorable.
I'm guessing most of the event ended down with football, it was just like that, but instead of football players on the field, we were on the field. And it's like you just look up and there's like a sea of people, and it's like, oh, okay, so I should be doing this now. But it was just so fun, because you've never played in an environment like that, and it was really cool.
Yeah, I feel like the highlight of my season, it was really nice, because it was a big change of pace for me, because I'm a saxophone player too. But conducting was a whole different, whole different battle, but like I learned so much about like my band and my people, but I also learned so much about myself. And like, we gotta go compete, and we went to some pretty hard competitions, but like whether we competed well or not, like we improved incredibly this season. I've never been so like proud to be a part of a group, just like our marching band, at least this year, but all four years that I've been a part of it, so.
So what was your favorite part?
Yeah, I'll tell you. I don't know, just playing in our team band.
It's exciting stuff, huh? Now, if I got this right, you guys, the last, your last day of performance, you guys went down to Missouri to perform, right?
No, so that was our second to last, was St. Joe.
Was it like in one day? Did you go to two competitions in one day?
Yes, we went to the state, which is, I think it's mandatory, isn't it? Like mandatory for marching band, so we went in our rating, and then we drove straight up to Vermillion, South Dakota, and performed in the USD Dome. And we were really scared. We got one of the highest scores, I think the, we tied for the highest score that day. It was a 90.4, which is actually walkers, so.
As we came in for our warm-up, it started like sweeping rain, and so like all like get back on the buses and wait, so, I don't know. You just don't get a lot of memories like that, so it was a lot of fun to head on the bus, and Tucker's like, go, 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 we gotta go. You know, we're all outside the whole joint to play.
We're all moved, yeah.
She goes, she goes, went to Glenwood, performed down there, packed the whole show up, and then drove three hours up to Vermillion. Nice.
Pretty impressive.
That's gotta be an exciting day.
It was, well, we have.
And you didn't lose, you didn't lose anybody?
We were close, I'm sure. We were close, there's some slow walkers. It's okay, we didn't lose anyone. Everyone made it to Vermillion that day.
Well, I know you guys have way more people help you out than just, you know, the, you guys have, I don't wanna show card, it's called the dance squad. What's it called in band?
Just parents.
Just parents, okay. So you have all those parents that, as soon as you're done, pack you all up and get you out there.
Parents, there's some grandparents, I think, some siblings, some people who don't even have people in band anymore, and they just come and... Some people who don't even have people in band anymore. And they just come and, come and represent like just the coolest people ever to help out.
So as we move forward through the rest of the C, at the rest of the, the school year then, what, what, uh, what would you guys recommend? I mean, who, what do they gotta, what is the, the people out there watching? What do they need to come watch you guys do? Do they need to come watch you do, I mean, really everything is what they should be coming. But what's your, what's your next favorite thing you're looking forward to?
Actually, I have a jazz performance next week.
Ooh.
Artists come in today and work with us. And that's gonna be a lot of fun. And playing some really cool songs. What is it, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So we have a dimensions assembly. You guys wanna come watch us perform?
Oh, okay. Well, that's right.
It's really fun. We have some good music coming out. This is the first year we have a year-round jazz band. So it'll be interesting to see where we end up at the end of the season too, so.
We're the holiday concert. The holiday concert's always pretty epic.
That's, it's amazing. Yeah.
Yeah. And the spaghetti, actually I don't know if it's spaghetti this year. Some sort of dinner. It fundraises a lot of money for our group. But you get to see a lot of small entambles, like vocally and, um, instrumentally. And a lot of us are more than like both of us. Like Bella and I are both in choir and band. And it's just such a cool, like, the holiday concert's so fun. So fun. But the jazz band concert next week too. We're all in the same jazz band. We're all in the jazz ones.
Now, do you guys play then for the, uh, what's the, uh, the show choir band called?
Show band?
Show band. Oh, is that what, that's show band. Okay. So you guys both play.
We also have an opener for that, isn't it?
We have a preview. I think it's the.
Tuesday before Thanksgiving, maybe?
It's the Monday.
Monday?
Yeah. But I'm in show choir. I'm in our, I'm in one of them, but those two are play. They actually have rehearsal after this.
Now, I love show choir, but I will say I'm always incredibly impressed by the band in the back. It's hard to like, it's almost like they're so good. Like I'm trying to watch show choir and I feel myself leaking back to the band. Like it's, it's incredible.
I miss it. I was show band.
It's the band kid in you.
I know. Well, I was also, I was also, we had swing choir in my school, not show choir. Also swing choir.
That shows our age.
I know. Swing choir, yeah. We never swung anybody though. I don't understand, so. Do you guys have any, uh, other questions?
Are any of you, the three seniors, are you gonna play moving forward after you graduate from high school?
I plan on it. I, whether it's minoring or majoring, I'm not sure yet, but I at least wanna minor in music. I really enjoy it, so.
It's wonderful.
Um, I'm going for nursing, so this is what I'm working at. Don't really have a band program. But, um, I think a lot of lessons I learn from band will take with me in that field. Cause you know, you get to learn to work with a lot of different people. And that's something that's really important.
Um, so I don't think I won't major in music, but I do plan to play and sing. Cause I'm going to high school. I'm admitted. So I'm not majoring in it, but absolutely will be a part of it in some way, shape, or form up there, so.
Very fun.
And kudos to you for this program. It is definitely something that we all can be very proud of. And when these kids take the field, they are all to be commended for what you guys put together. And it's, it's, it does, it just sends shivers down my spine. I was not a band kid. I don't have a band kid. I have the show choir kids, but I still have the utmost respect for the amount of time and effort that you guys put in. And for the season that you pull off in the amount of time that you do. So kudos to all of you.
Well, I'm just glad that my daughter's not here watching you guys play the sax before I made her play my trumpet because I already owned a trumpet. Cause then she'd be like, I wanna play saxophone. And I would have to go buy a saxophone versus already own a trumpet, so. But, so.
That's a great job. I mean, sticking with that, a same program all the way through. Um, like you said, the memories that you had this year and all the way through. Uh, like I said, I'm a band kid myself. And I still talk to other band members that were in the band. Uh, and I've been out thirty years. So those are, uh, those are the memories that, that'll carry, carry you through life. So great job.
And you as a sophomore, you're keeping right up with these seniors. Look at that. What are you gonna do next year when you're just by yourself? Hopefully they find more people to play with you, so.
Take first chair.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. You guys are awesome.
Thank you. And we can post that video and share it?
All right.
Welcome to keep playing.
Trying to log in here. Okay. All right. Um, any other commendations and good news?
Uh, have, yeah, have some. Um, I'm just gonna touch on a few most recent ones. We'll do a whole next, we don't have any visitors coming to the next meeting. So on the November seventeenth meeting, we'll do like a fall wrap-up. And so I'm having, I'll have Mr. Gerberty put that together for us of all the, the fall activities to that point. Um, but a couple of recent ones here. Uh, the, our cheer and dance competitions, they, or cheer and dance teams just went to competition. I had to pull up here one second. Um, shoot. They. Uh, cheer ended up, they went to, they went to state and they got, uh, fifth, uh, fifth place and a sixth place at state, which is phenomenal on the four A category. Um, the LCH, the, the LCHS dance team, uh, went, eight girls competed, state qualifying showcase, showcase. They all received division one ratings. They all scored above eighty. And then Brooklyn, who's a junior, scored the top ten and she'll compete again in, in December. So. Um, and then they're one of six, our team is one of sixteen statewide to receive the distinguished academic award for maintaining an impressive team, uh, average GPA of three point nine one. So that's awesome as well. So, uh, lots of kudos to our cheer and dance teams. And then we'll have a more generic wrap-up. Um, I know, um, swim team's wrapping up their season. Football team just wrapped up their season in the playoffs. Uh, volleyball, uh, came a win short of going to state. So, uh, just very successful overall. So, but we'll have a nice little wrap-up for that.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments, I'm not comments, commendations and good news from anyone else?
Small plays this next weekend?
It is. Yep, yep. Fall play.
Make sure you.
Saturday and Sunday?
Not, I don't know if that's true. Is it Saturday?
Yeah, Saturday and Sunday. Saturday at seven PM and, uh.
Sunday at two?
Yep, Sunday, yep.
I do wanna say something. We, we, I went to conferences at the middle school and I was so impressed with the teachers. And the STEM room was really fun to go into cause I've never seen it before. But what he is doing with that program is phenomenal. Like the wind turbine activities and he's got this cool plant that, uh, he's trying to get to go all along his cabinets and like he has, I've talked about it before, but he is absolutely inspired by boys to really dive into STEM. And all the teachers were very impressive.
Yeah.
And it was, it was just really great to see.
Yes, we have fantastic teachers.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, the next item on our agenda is comments and suggestions. This is the first time during our agenda that anyone in the audience or anyone online can address the board.
I think you'll have one just a couple of minutes from online.
Okay. Do you wanna wait or should we go to the consent agenda?
Uh, nope, I think we can. No other comments online?
I got a raise can, but don't comment yet, so.
Okay.
From David.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and move on then?
Yeah, we'll have another opportunity later on if he formulates us. Just let us know.
Yeah, yeah. And anyone else listening, go ahead and start typing. So the next, next opportunity they can, um, that can be shared. All right, we'll go on then to our consent agenda. Can I get, uh, do we have an updated personnel sheet?
Uh, no, the personnel sheet that you received is the most current one.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Vote please.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
All right, we'll then go to reports. Seven point zero one, superintendent report.
All right, so we have just a couple of updates here. Um, so we do have the election tomorrow. So if you're gonna go and vote, we have seven, uh, very capable candidate, candidates and we have four openings. Uh, so please go out and vote tomorrow. Um, a couple, just, just FYIs. I heard this legislative session might be a little, you know, might be interesting. Not that the last, see, I've been an administrator now for like fifteen, fourteen years. So not that the last twenty years haven't been interesting, but, um, this one'll be interesting. There's got some budget pieces and some tax pieces and then some potential policy pieces. So, um, if you are interested in going to the IASB conference, and I know we have to be later, you know, depending on the election tomorrow, there's a wait on that. Um, that is at the, you know, at the end of, uh, November, I would recommend it because they'll give us a lot of, uh, updates at that point. As far, as far as what the initial conversations are, um, and how they could potentially affect education. Playgrounds, they are, they're moving forward. Uh, slow. I was hoping to have them by the end of October. Um, they are, I think turf is going in this week and then, uh, the playground equipment is ready. I believe it's been assembled and it's ready to install. So we should, should move fast and they should be able to wrap that up. So. Parking lot cameras by the end of November, I believe it's like the twenty, um, give you guys a date here. I think it's the week of the twentieth, they're gonna start installing them. Um, so we'll have parking lot cameras and some, uh, license plate readers, you know, towards the end of the month. So that'll be good. Uh, we are doing a, the, um, student council is partnering with, um, the chamber with leadership, the leadership CDB class. And they're gonna do a diaper drive, uh, for the MICA house. And that'll be on November seventeenth and eighteenth. And they're gonna do it at arrival and dismissal at the middle school in Titan Hill. So as parents come to school and drop off their kids, they can drop off diapers at the same time. And or as, as they come to school to pick up their kids, they can drop off diapers at the same time as well. Or you can, if you don't have any kids, you just wanna drive through and easily drop off diapers, you can do that as well. Or you can send diapers with your kids to school. We'll take them, I'm, the MICA house is not picky how they get to us. Um, they'll take them however, which way you can, you can get them there. So I will be sending out a flyer, uh, tomorrow with that update. You know, trying to make sure that we can, you know, help them out however we can. Um, and then that's, that's really about it. Other than that, I know that there's a process in place now. We're moving forward with, um, the next steps of, of finding a, um, uh, CMR to, uh, construction manager at risk to kind of start spearheading the, the middle school renovation, uh, project. I know they're already working on plans. Uh, the architects are for kind of an initial pass-through of what they believe, you know, we should be doing at the middle school for the renovation. Um, obviously nothing gets approved until you guys view it and approve it. So, uh, just kinda moving forward, the high school. Um, they are also moving forward with, um, uh, kind of doing, you'll see the, the, the front renovation. I mean, they're getting ready to put up some walls and some roof. And then I believe they're going to potentially, um, they're talking about making some penetrations prior to, they're gonna wait to do that until the fall or until the, till, till, or the, the summer. But I think that there's gonna be some windows of opportunities where we don't have kids on a Friday. So they're gonna start making some of those penetrations. So then that way, uh, they can continue to work a little bit over the winter months and, uh, and get us ahead of schedule with that. So that'd be nice. That'd be rare in construction that we're actually potentially ahead of schedule. So I know that they've been working with Mr. Vin Chattle and his team over there as far as making sure that they can move forward with that project with, with minimal disruption. I mean, obviously we have a lot of stuff every day that goes on in that office. We don't need, you know, jackhammers and everything else going on. But, you know, if they can, if they can make those penetrations when they're not there and then that allows them to continue working somewhere over the winter, that's, that's good. So we'll, we'll see what we can do with that. Outside of that, that's, that's about it for now. So.
Okay, any?
Any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions? We do have a board meeting on the seventeenth. Can I bring some diapers then?
You can. We will take diapers at the board meeting. Yes.
And that'll be at every school though, like?
Nope, just, just the, the student councils at the, um, at Titan Hill and middle school. There is no student council at Craft. So that's, we're just doing Titan Hill and middle school.
Okay.
So, and then the high school, there's not a whole lot of parents that drop our kids off. Kids bring them. So I guess if the kids wanted to bring the diapers and stack them up in the office of the high school, we'll get them. So. And I'll tell the same to Craft. If kids, people drive through and wanna throw out a box of diapers when they're dropping off their kid, just stack them up and I'll come, I'll come get them. So.
Okay. You can fill a bus, right?
That would be amazing. Yes.
All right, we'll go on then to discussion items. Eight point zero one, school bus purchase.
Um, so the school bus purchase, uh, we did get, uh, two different bids. One was for, um, Thomas buses. And then one was for, um, Bluebird. Uh, recommendation is to, we have two buses with air conditioning right now with the change to go to the MRC, um, and maybe having just a little bit further travel. Uh, that was one of the requests. If you remember when, uh, softball came last year, that they requested if we're gonna make that move to potentially get another bus with air conditioning on it. Um, and so that was kind of on our list anyway. If we, so we can add one with air conditioning and then one without air conditioning. Um, again, we have, you know, twenty-eight buses, two buses a year. It's still fourteen years between, between, uh, bus refurbishes. So eventually we'll probably have to throw in a third, but not when we're doing all these projects here. So for the next year and two, you'll, you'll see me continue to bring two buses, uh, to the table. And then, uh, we might have to start ramping it up to three buses. So it's the only way we can continue to maintain a fleet that's, that's of a serviceable age. So.
Which brand do they have now?
Bluebird. They do have a couple Thomases, but Bluebird's primarily what we've bought. And I mean, that's the only buses we've bought since I've been here. And that's what they had bought in the four years prior. So I wanna say twenty, twenty-two of the twenty-eight are Bluebird. So.
With the move to the MRC and only having two air-conditioned buses now, is it worth getting both as air-conditioned buses?
I mean, the board can. That, that would, that's one of the things we discussed too. But I know that when, uh, when that conversation was coming up and we talked to briefly about busing situation, the, at the time I had recommended, I told you guys I would bring definitely one air-conditioned bus and a one non-air-conditioned bus. But if the board would like to do two air-conditioned buses, they're not just air-conditioned. They also have the storage underneath. That's the difference too. The, the hundred and seventy-six, we'll look at the Bluebird cause that'd be my recommendation, but the bus for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, that's no AC, also doesn't have the bottom storage compartments. So, um, that's nice for when you travel with duffel bags and football gear and that kinda stuff. Um.
Do we have that fifteen?
We do, yeah.
Seventeen thousand in the budget?
I think you should.
That was, I was thinking.
I think it would be, I think it would be nice also. I mean, it seems like our teams are getting bigger. And there's more teams going out all at the same time.
And I don't want four buses and one bus gets stuck not, who's gonna draw the short stick? So if we can, for that amount of money, you know, I think at one time, a few years ago, it was like a thirty thousand dollar.
Well, what, just, just two years ago was a thirty, when we bought air-conditioned buses, there was a thirty thousand dollar difference.
And this is, I think, much more reasonable.
Seventeen.
I would, I think, I'm with Jen, it's.
I agree.
I would be okay with both of them being air-conditioned for that cost. So that's my two cents.
That's a good point.
Someone had to redo the math. We'd go to three eight six seven eight zero. So three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten, if we get the two ACs, it would go up to three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty.
And that is from Bluebird, correct?
That's from Bluebird, yeah. The Bluebird, the one ninety-three, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, from school bus sales.
Right, well, the, the action doesn't state Bluebird. That's why. I wanted to clarify that.
It's, it's actually, it's more like six months now. So because we just bought the last ones in, uh, March and we just, we got them last week. So.
Oh, wow.
So.
About a six month.
Six month, yeah. So really if you order them now, the, the hope would be is they're here for summer. So.
And how many AC buses do we have right now?
Two.
Okay.
How many miles or anything around them? I mean, how old they are?
Well, they're four years old. Yeah, they're purchased the, the first year I got here. So they, uh, I wanna, I wanna say probably around sixty. They'd be average about fifteen thousand a year on them. It'd be seventeen thousand, seventy dollars difference.
Is there any other discussion?
Are those ones that you can work on here?
Uh, what do you mean?
As far as, I know before they, Chuck had said something about something had to go to the devils to get worked. As far as, I know before they, Chuck had said something about something had to go, to be going to get worked on, but I'm assuming it's not Bluebird, because if all the fleet is that way.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's more like special, like, there's certain, there's certain things when it happens, we have to take them to a special, like, uh...
Anything electronic or?
Um, they, no, they have this, the, for the differential fluid, like, there's like a thing that happens on these buses. I don't, this, our current buses haven't had them. They must have changed the design a little bit, but I know the ones that, we had the same thing happen in Missouri Valley. The buses we bought that were like, uh, twenty-eighteens, nineteen's, like, like the, whatever it is, the pump or whatever that runs their, their, the, the differential fluid, like, somehow that goes bad, but it's like an internal piece, so they have to basically take the entire engine apart to get at this thing to replace it, so, I don't know if they, seems like a flaw.
And are these rear engines?
Uh, yeah. The same ones we bought, uh, last time. That's what Mike are, Mike and Chuck like to self-pick out their, their, their design, 'cause they know what they like to work on and what they don't, so.
So just to clarify, we're all comfortable and we're good financially. We can do the two ACs for a total of three eighty-six, seven eighty?
From Bluebird.
From Bluebird, okay.
Yes.
Okay, any, anything else on that? All right.
The specs on those buses are phenomenal, as far as the list of what is required and things for...
Tough.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I don't even know how to read that, that's why.
Iowa has a long list of what is needed on a bus.
The door opens and closes, and it's got air conditioning, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, so that would be the Bluebird there.
The kids will enjoy it.
Softball trips in July were no fun.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, and the coaches or staff.
Well, I know, yeah, they'll be, they'll be thrilled, so.
Well, and then we also, baseball, I mean, any of the summer, that'll be, if you're not fighting.
Really, even in the fall, like, you know, volleyball, football, I mean, it's cross-country.
It's still toasty in August and September.
And I know this is off-kilter, but we cannot purchase charter buses to transport kids, correct?
We cannot purchase charter buses, no, we can rent them.
Rent them, but we cannot purchase them.
Nebraska, you can purchase them. We can't do that here, so.
I might have been at a conference a few weeks ago, and they did, the state did ask us if we'd raise our hand if we would purchase a charter bus if we were able to, and there was a significant number of us that did raise our hands, so. I was interested to see where that might go.
So, that is potentially something that may be good?
Yes, I would guess from being asked that question, that it might be something that comes up in legislation.
Okay.
That was the next question that some of us asked, was how much is a charter bus?
How much are they?
Well, the bigger thing would be to get them to pass where we can buy new vans, that would be the...
Yeah, if we could buy a new twelve-passenger van, that'd be amazing.
That would be the bigger push.
Or if we could buy a handicap accessible van that was not manufactured by MV1, which is the only one that they allow right now, and that went out of business in twenty sixteen, so. The company did. It's the only one that's spec. You're not allowed to buy a handicap accessible van if it's been, if it's been modified. It has to be built as a handicap accessible van, and the only one ever to be built specifically as a handicap accessible van from the ground up was something called a Mobile Vehicle One, MV1, and that went out of business in twenty sixteen. Actually flew a guy to Denver to pick up an MV1 one time, because you can drive a van without a, without a CDL, but he can't drive a bus without a CDL. And right now, the only way you can transport, um, students in wheelchairs is with a bus, and you have to have a CDL. So, we went and bought a van that could transport kids without a CDL, so then, you know, we had an issue, and we wouldn't, you know, it just, it just opened up our transportation world, you know. Not only that, but, like, sometimes they have, you know, students with disabilities have specialized schedules, and they have specialized, and to load them up on a bus, big bus all by themselves, might be fun one or two times, but then after a while, it's like, oh, I'm on a big bus by myself, like, this is lonely. You should have seen the first student that, that got to get up there, because they, they lock you in right in the front seat, and the fact that he was sitting in the front seat of a vehicle, like, he is just in seventh heaven. Like, I get chills right now thinking about it, like, it was amazing, you know, so, but, so that's, that's the kinda things I've been, I've, in every single year, I push that legislation over to legislators to say, hey, this is a very minor fix, an easy fix, and you'd make a world of difference.
So much money.
Well, it saves us money, but just, just the fact that you, like, it would be so much easier to transport students with mobility issues if we had options, you know. We don't have any options. We have to take an eighty-five passenger bus to go pick up a student in a wheelchair. It's awful, so, but.
We'll keep trying the state way.
I'll keep, I'll keep shuffling it down there, like, hey, this is a win-win for everybody.
State of Iowa needs to change on that one.
I know.
Okay, we'll go on then to eight point zero two, Green Hills AEA board election.
Uh, so we have to, each board gets a vote on a candidate, uh, to be on the Green Hills AEA Board of Directors. Uh, there is only one, uh, candidate who's running, um, Mr. Murray. Uh, he was a, so Murray Finn, he, he's got a long history in Green Hills. He was a former business teacher. He has, has worked for Green Hills for many years. He's retired now. Uh, but he ran all of the, basically all the career and technical ed, um, aspect of Green Hills for, I mean, back when I was a business teacher in two thousand nine, he was, he was running it, so. Um, so he'd be a fantastic candidate to serve, serve on the board. When I saw his name up there, I was like, well, that's great, so. Obviously, he's the only one running, so, I would make the recommendation of the board to, but at least it's a good one, you know, it's not like I saw his name, like, ugh, Bubba's on there. So, recommendations. I, I, I would highly vouch for Murray to be a good representative, or representative for us.
Is there any discussion?
Are those three-year terms? Or are they four-year term? I, I don't, you don't, if you don't off the top, it's not.
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I, I didn't even look at it.
I just didn't know if they ran like the same schedule that we do.
Is the document underneath it?
It's fine, I can look it up, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Real nosey.
All right. Um, this is the second time during our board meeting that we will take comments and suggestions from anyone sitting in the audience in the boardroom or anyone online, if they'd like to type something in. Did you ever get?
Yes, um, just wanted to give props to the tight-margin van and lots of claps. I thought the clap was a raised hand, so. Just wanted to comment on our van.
Gotcha. So now, if anyone else has anything they would like to address the board after we've gone through our discussion items, they can do that now. Good, all right. Then we'll go then to our action items, ten point zero one, school bus purchase. Can I get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion. Motion to approve the purchase of two buses with AC units from Bluebird for the cost of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, we have a dis, second, is there any discussion? Vote, please.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffle?
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturm?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
All right, we'll go then to ten point zero two, Green Hills AEA board election. Could I get a motion, please?
Let's make the motion to approve for Murray Finn to serve on the Green Hills AEA Board of Directors.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
And to answer your question, it is a four-year term that, um, he's going on to, uh, and everyone is being redone this year, uh, with the redistricting of them, so. Uh, they will all be four years, except for, there's two districts that will only be two-year terms for this year, so to reset everyone.
Okay, any, anything else? Vote, please.
Mrs. Shuffle?
Yes.
Mr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturm?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
All right, items of interest and future board meetings. Uh, tomorrow is election day, so what do they say, vote, vote early and vote often? And regulars, um, board meeting will be November seventeenth at six thirty, and then the IASB state conference is November eighteenth through the twentieth, and is there anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you for...